Roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Schenk?
Here.
Eppenheim?
Here.
Forster?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
And President Byrne.
Here.
And, what about me? And trustee Takaoka.
We dumped you.
Sorry.
I didn't know I was in.
Can we get a motion to appoint one of you as temporary chair, given the mayor's remote status?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman pro temp for the duration of the meeting.
Second it.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Eppenheim?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
And President Byrne.
Aye.
Okay, we've been called to order and done a roll call, so would everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have any citizens wishing to address the board on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, then in that case, under the village president's report, the appointment of Christopher Venata as the director of public works?
Yes, thank you. Well, as you all know, after thirty years of service to the village, Dave Brown, our former director of public works, village engineer, retired last Friday on March 3rd. In anticipation of this retirement, this past November, the village began the recruitment process with Gov HR USA to fill this position, and a job advertisement and recruitment brochure were posted nationally across various engineering and public works job boards. In total, the village received twenty-one applications across three different states and the country of Canada. After a multi-round interview process, which included President Byrne and the board of trustees, our team unanimously recommended the selection of Christopher Venata as the village's next director of public works and village engineer. Christopher is a licensed civil engineer with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Northwestern University. He has over thirteen years of engineering experience in both the public and private sector, and most recently, Christopher served as a senior project manager for the city of Evanston. President Byrne's recommendation to appoint Christopher Venata as the village's director of public works, village engineer, is before the board this evening for final consideration and approval.
All right. Is Christopher here?
So we'll look for just a motion and a second to approve the appointment before we swear Chris in.
Yeah, he's, yeah.
He is here.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what, that's what Roger was asking, yeah, he's here. Is there a motion to approve the appointment?
So made.
Second. We have a motion a second, any comments or questions? Trustee Eppenheim?
Once again, kudos to Gov HR and all the staff here and everyone else for fulfilling this long, difficult process, but we're all very pleased with the final selection here, and good luck to you, Christopher.
Okay, any other comments or questions? No, I echo the sentiments, the process went very well. We had, we had some good people, so. Okay, then, a roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Eppenheim?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
And President Byrne.
Aye, aye.
All right, Chris, would you like to draw me up front, please? Could you please raise your right hand? And repeat after.
Can you hold us up? Can you wait a second?
Sure.
Who's older? You or Christopher?
I think I might have him by a few years.
Really?
I think.
You're older than him. Wow. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Repeat after me, please. I, Christopher Venata.
I, Christopher Venata.
Having been appointed to the position of director of public works, village engineer.
Having been appointed to the position of director of public works, village engineer.
In the village of Vernon Hills?
In the village of Vernon Hills.
In the county of Lake?
In the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of director of public works, village engineer?
Of the office of director of public works, village engineer.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Christopher?
Yes.
Would you like to say a few words?
I, I would. Mayor Byrne, members of the board, I really appreciate and excited about this appointment. I'm looking forward to getting to know all of you better, getting to know this community even better, and all the staff, and I just want to say thank you very much, and I'm excited to get started.
Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you, and you were the, you were the, you were the best candidate.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Assistant Village Manager.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. As the board is aware, the village funds Vernon Hills Pageant, and we are pleased to reintroduce tonight pageant co-directors Karen Kalanowski and Kelly O'Brien, who are going to invite some of the queens up, and they're going to give an update on how Vernon Hills Pageant is starting off 2023. So Karen and Kelly, go ahead and approach.
Information. All right. Here we go. We're almost regulars here, we come here very often, we're very fortunate. So the Vernon Hills Pageant would like to congratulate the 2022 queens for their outstanding representation at the 2023 Lake County Illinois State Pageant, which I will preface Vernon Hills, year after year, always has amazing, talented, poised, smart, young ladies that continue to represent this town really well. The event was held Saturday, February 25th, at Mundeline High School, and our queens competed against ten other pageant queens representing their ten communities within Lake County. So without further ado, we'd like to begin by congratulating our Little Miss Vernon Hills, Savannah Goodman, who is second runner-up to Little Miss Lake County. Savannah?
Hi. I'm ten years old, and I go to Aspen Elementary.
Did you have fun in the pageant?
Yes, it was, it was really fun, and I got to meet all of the other contestants, and it's just so fun going onstage and showing the world how I am.
And Savannah, so we got to work with Savannah, and Savannah told us, part of her speech was, what do you want to be when you grow up? And she wants to be a pageant director, so you're looking at the future pageant director of the Vernon Hills Pageant.
Many, many years. All right, my turn. Next up, we'd like to congratulate Junior Miss Vernon Hills 2022, Kirtu Gumaluru, who placed as the winner of the Junior Miss category, so she is now Junior Miss Lake County 2023. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Kirtu Gumaluru, I'm fourteen years old, and I attend Stevenson High School. I had such a great time making so many wonderful memories at the LZIS Pageant, and I can't wait to make even more memories as Junior Miss Lake County.
All right, last but not least, we'd like to congratulate Miss Vernon Hills, Haley Kalanowski, who won the title of Miss Lake County 2023. Haley, come join us. A quick note, this is the second Lake County title Haley has had, she was Junior Miss Lake County in 2019, and she was a Little Miss Vernon Hills, who was my Little Miss Vernon Hills back in the day, Junior Miss Vernon Hills, and now Miss Vernon Hills. So she has been with the Vernon Hills Pageant for many, many years, and I'm sure she'll continue to do it. So Haley, you want to say anything?
Um, yeah, I would just like to say how grateful I am to both the board and the village of Vernon Hills. Obviously, as Kelly said, I've been doing this for quite a while, so I've really grown up with this pageant system, and it's been a really great experience for me, and I can't wait to lead as Miss Lake County and continue my year and serve Vernon Hills through June.
And then, last quick thank you to the village of Vernon Hills and all of you guys. I know we say it over and over again, but really, we have a town that supports the pageant, that supports young women in our community, and really makes it a priority, so then our ladies can succeed in whatever their future endeavors are. So we have a lot of success from this pageant, and don't worry, we are not losing them as Vernon Hills queens, they will continue to attend all of the Vernon Hills events, and then some, so we will have them for the remainder of their reign through June, so we're really excited. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you, ladies, for representing us so well, and thank you, ladies, for running the pageant, and we really appreciate it. All right, nobody else has a speaking part on the regular agenda, correct? What's that? Communications?
At the end.
Yeah, yeah, no. So next would be omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through H? Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second. Chief, you wanted to address item E.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I just, as we always do, anytime the village expends any funds from any of the seizure accounts, even though the amount doesn't require action by the board, we bring this to the board to make sure we have a clear and established record of expenditure of any of those funds. In this case, it's just under eighty-five hundred dollars for a two-year agreement with Flock Safety for the lease of a portable ALPR camera system that I mentioned in my report two, two weeks ago. So mentioned I'd be bringing that to the board, but just want to highlight that it's on the omnibus for grant expenditure, or, I'm sorry, not grant, seizure fund expenditures.
Okay. All right, thank you, chief. Or we have a motion and a second to approve items A through H, any other comments or questions?
I just have one, one comment for item H. There was a numbering error for the resolution number, the proper resolution should be 2023-009. So just make that note for the minutes.
It's just a clerical. All right, if there's nothing else, then a roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Eppenheim?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
And President Byrne. President Byrne.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Motion carries.
To get the Aye?
Yep. Okay. We have one item of unfinished additional business, approval and passage of ordinance 2023-025, and ordinance amending ordinance 2003-22, which approved the development permit for Pod 10 of Greg's Landing, Royal Burke Dale.
Thank you. This item was in front of the committee of the whole at the December 13th meeting. At that time, the committee was generally in favor of the proposed amendment, which would allow a slight change to the roof material restrictions for Pod 10, which is Royal Burke Dale, within Greg's Landing. The, just by way of a reminder, the community had come to the village with a request to allow solar roof tiles with an appearance somewhat similar to a slate tile roof. The committee of the whole was in favor of it. There were questions asked, particularly with respect to what kind of impact this might have on other development permits, particularly within Greg's Landing, which has several custom home development pods. The, the reason this is on unfinished business partially is because I wanted to give you a quick update on the plan for that part of the request, which was to figure out how, how to deal with other requests like this in the future. I have put together an amendment to the zoning code, which will be scheduled for a hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission in April, which would add a section to the RPUD section of the zoning code to specifically spell out how a request to modify development permit would be handled. Would it require a public hearing? Would it not require a public hearing? What sort of threshold of community support would be required to avoid a public hearing? So that is in the works, it'll be published for the, probably mid-April Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. With that, what you have in front of you for consideration tonight is an ordinance that is specific to Royal Burke Dale. It would amend the development permit, which was originally approved in ordinance 2003-22, as noted in the staff report. It is pretty specific to the amendment requested. It does add a sentence to the section H, which deals with the roof materials that are allowed. Beyond that, there are just some minor housekeeping changes in it, things such as the reference to infrastructure have become obsolete as the infrastructure has been constructed. And beyond that, I just want to thank Irene Serenian for her patience as we worked through this, this has been quite a long time since her original request, and so I just want to just acknowledge that her patience, and I thank her for that. So happy to answer any questions you have on the ordinance.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, my question is, what's the appearance of these roof tiles, roof shingles? Or are they, you know, something of a much larger nature, like a solar panel in general?
So I don't have an image that I can display on the screen right at the moment, but it has the appearance somewhat similar to a slate tile roof. They're individual tiles, they're dark in color, and it's integrated into the roof. It would replace the existing roof, as opposed to a typical panel installation, which is mounted above the roof, so.
Yeah, they don't, in the drawings that we saw at the other meeting, they, they don't look anything like a, your typical solar panel.
Eighteen by eighteen?
Yeah, they.
I believe this was the size.
They look, yeah, they look more like just a shingle.
And this particular product is made by Tesla, and we would be working, subject to the approval here, we would be working with them on a permit and ensure that everything is, is designed properly, but I apologize, I don't have, I don't have that slide with me tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this? You're looking for a motion to approve this tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-025? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second? If there are no other comments or questions, a roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Eppenheim?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. New business or communication?
The village and American Legion Post 1247 will be recognizing residents who have honorably served or are currently serving our nation in the U.S. Armed Forces this spring. The Vernon Hills Honors Military Banner Program was created to ensure all who defended our nation and call, or called Vernon Hills Home can be recognized with a boulevard banner from May through November. The program has no fee for participants or their families. Families and loved ones of former service members who have since passed are also encouraged to participate. The above image is a picture of a much younger Jim Hire, who served in World War II on the USS Corrigidor. Jim lived most of his post-war life in Vernon Hills, and his daughter Diana, who now lives in Texas, was thrilled to hear about this program and see him honored by his hometown. Again, we want to emphasize, this program provides an opportunity to honor veterans present, those who call Vernon Hills Home, and those who have since passed, and it gives them an opportunity to have their legacy be recognized. At the May 2 Village Board Meeting, we will be revealing the names of the class of 2023 inductees, and we'll have many of the families and some of the service members here present. To learn more about this program, visit the village website, search keyword "military banner," stop by the village hall, and see any one of our friendly fronts, desk staff, or contact the American Legion Post Commander Todd Renahan at the information above. The May 2 Board Meeting is going to be amazing, we're going to have a great class to induct, and many of them are going to be here on that day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other business or communication? Trustee Schenk?
So this might become like your COVID, gov, government.com testing monthly PSA. My monthly PSA is everyone, I implore everyone, whoever can to get CPR certified and trained on AEDs. I think it's very important, you never know what life you can save. Just this week, Kevin was telling me, most of our staff is CPR certified, if not all, and we have approximately twenty-four AEDs throughout our facility, is that correct? So.
V hack also.
What's that?
V hack also.
And the V hack too, which is, can save a life. So Countryside Fire Protection District puts on classes, and our, also, Park District also puts on classes, so if you're a Vernon Hills resident or not, I urge, if you can, to get certified, because you never know what's going to happen.
Okay. Trustee Eppenheim?
So I have a couple of things to follow up on, on that note. I'm curious, do we have a map of where these AEDs that the village provides?
So our AEDs are kind of in two parts, we, I know we have AEDs in each of our squad cars, chief, if I'm not mistaken?
I was just asking, chief.
I, I believe we have AEDs in each of our squad cars, is that correct?
We do, in each of the police buildings.
In each of the police buildings, and then also in every village facility. There's an appropriate number in each facility. So as far as a map of where they are in each building, I'd have to look into see if we have that, is that what you're asking, or were you asking?
Sort of, yeah, sort of that, and what identifiers are there? When someone enters a building, where the AED is located, that sort of thing, and also even at the V hack, is there any kind of information that's publicly posted in case of emergency?
Most of them have that large red sign that hangs off, I know the one at the golf course does, it's fairly obvious where the one at the golf course is.
And I believe at the V hack, it's a portable unit that is displayed, in fact, that was actually, because, gosh, I.
But is it at the?
Worked on that, it was on the pinwheel in the center.
In the center of the pinwheel.
That's when it was, when we ended up doing it, then we, I believe we had another one out by the field.
And it's a fairly good sized sign that identifies where each AED is.
But that's when you're standing by the sign, how about when you enter the V hack? Like, is there something saying, in case of emergency, the, the AED is located at the center of the pinwheel?
I don't believe it is, but I, I know that we have done the sign where it's a barcode for all our restaurants, it's something that could be added in as a safety aspect for safety and probably even a 911 or medical.
It's going to be one of those things where you're not going to be looking for it till you need it, so to David's point, when you walk in, just a recognition of this is an AED supplied site or something, location.
That's where it's located, yeah.
Where it's located.
Especially at the V hack, because it's a large.
Is there only one at the V hack? Do we have one on the concessions for the soccer fields over there?
I believe we have two.
We have two over there?
Because I know for a fact, going back several years ago, because I brought it up before with Dave and I, gosh, that's a long time ago for me when I was coaching, but yes, there were, we had a, had two that were up there, and I forgot, I do know one was in the center where the pinwheel is, and the other one I thought was out by five.
Where's Field Five, so in reference to the concessions, where would Field Five be? So there's nothing in the pinwheel, so that's two. Should we add one to the pinwheel? Because, I mean, think about, that's a long, can make a difference in time.
And all those, all those fields, everything is, is numbered, so for clarification, if someone were to go, it does state where Field, you know, where all the fields are, Fields seven and eight, which is usually the soft.
And then for facilities, like building, like when you walk in?
Right.
Again, a notification, it's an AED-covered site, and these are the locations in the building, just like a evac route, right?
Right.
Have something like, because where's the one, where's the closest one to this room? Under my desk?
That's a great question.
And there's another one.
Really? There's one right over there?
Yeah, there's one out in the lobby, too.
Oh.
Oh, not that desk, with the one.
I think of what I'm hearing, it might be a good exercise to go through, maybe with Countryside Fire District.
And delineate and make sure there's signage when people are entering facilities, that they.
Make sure we have a sufficient number per, a recommendation by paramedics or.
Right, right.
And, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the other point was another PSA kind of announcement. Our water filters for our refrigerator had expired, and I was looking to get new ones, and in the past, I'd always just purchased the same one that came with the refrigerator, and it's actually sort of a more expensive model, because it filters out bacteria and cysts and other things, and finally, I thought, you know, we've got a really good water supply, I wonder if we need this. So I contacted our municipal water source, the lab director today, and she agreed with me that we don't need the highest certification water filters, and it wasn't, it wasn't clear on our website, and it wasn't even clear on their website, that, that that's not needed, and the, the difference can be pretty substantial for a three-pack, I just looked up of the fancier ones, it's a hundred and forty bucks versus ninety dollars, so, so I just wanted to point out as a PSA to the community that you just want the NC-certified number 42, which filters out sort of bad tasting things, but you don't need to filter out bacteria, because they do a great job, and there is no bacteria in our water supply. If anyone has more questions about that, they can certainly email me or, or call me, and the lab director said that she would actually modify their site to make it more clear, and I think there's probably a lot of people out there that's similar as our situation, you just repurchase the one that came with the refrigerator, but the refrigerators are sold throughout the country, and they don't know, you know, what the water supplies are in each municipality and how good they are. But she assured me that they go through four different types of filtration, including a UV treatment that really kills everything, and so, so we should be proud of not only the water, water supply system, but also save a little money.
Okay, thank you. Chief, did you still want to? No, okay. Any other new business or communication? Okay, if not, then entertain a motion to adjourn to go to committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. A motion a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody opposed, all right.
We'll let them leave if they want to.
Yeah, okay. Now we're, if anybody wants to leave, we're going to go to committee of the whole, this would be a good time for you to leave, because we're going to, we're going to spend a lot of time tonight on budget, and I got to tell you, if you want to stick around, budget stuff is fun. Yeah. Then I also had a question, why didn't we have a, doesn't Chris get to sit at one of the tables? I mean, it's like.
We're not making him talk tonight, so.
Chris, I just had you covered, I was wondering why you didn't get a seat at the big kid table when you, you know. Well, it was perfect having Gene here tonight, because he, he knows where all the AEDs are. Okay.
Okay, Mayor Byrne, are you ready to open the committee of the whole meeting? Okay, Mayor Byrne, are you ready to open the committee of the whole meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to call the meeting.
And we'll need another motion again for chairman pro tem for the meeting.
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Appenheim?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
And President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 7, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Appenheim?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Epstein.
Shane, Schenk?
Aye.
And President Byrne?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the Liquor Barn, 700 North Milwaukee Avenue, amendment to liquor code to establish a license class for sampling.
Thank you. This is the second time this has appeared on a committee of the whole agenda. The stores' representatives were not available the prior, the prior meeting in February, so we've brought it back to you. Just one quick introductory point here, the request from the Liquor Barn, I would say it's misleading to call it sampling, as I've done in the staff report now twice. It is really more a very limited on-premise consumption license that they're requesting. In your, in the staff memo for this item, there's a, just one sample, we've received a couple of different samples of ordinances from the Liquor Barn, one from Palatine, we received one from Libertyville. The gist of what they're requesting is very limited on-premise consumption. At this moment, what they're anticipating is that they might come in, they might be able to acquire an occasional, very rare and expensive bourbon, and instead of selling it by the bottle, they would like the ability to sell it on-premise by the glass. It's limited, and the questions for the committee of the whole at this moment is, first and foremost, is the, is the committee interested in pursuing something like this? If not, I guess it's moot, but if the committee is interested in it, the follow-up questions are, what types of limitations would the committee like to see as we prepare a license, a new license to come back to the board for review? So if you look in the staff memo, some of the questions related to operational restrictions are the hours that they would have the service available, how often, what days of the week, for example. Is there a need to have a physical area defined within the store, a limited seating area, something like that? Would there be a maximum size of a, of a, of a product to be served? How many glasses could be served? And just generally speaking, then, with that, is there an expectation that there will be some type of food available, even if it is prepackaged? Would there be some need to have food on, at the store? I have with us tonight Marcel Oshansky from Liquor Barn, who can explain what it is that they're looking to do, but I just want to give you a quick, quick intro into what the staff memo was requesting here.
Well, and how would this fit into Basset then as well? Are, I'm assuming that sales clerks are, all have, do they have, they have to have some sort of Basset training to actually sell alcohol, correct?
That's correct.
So they would have been, would this, do they get the same Basset training that a, like a standard bar service would get?
It is the same.
Okay.
Mr. Oshansky.
Good evening, everyone. Not sure if I need to move that to me or not. Yeah, just wanted to come in, answer some questions on what we're trying to do. I know I approached Andrew with it, because it seems to be the trend that everybody's going to, as we're getting into more of these allocated, limited items that everybody wants to get their hands on but cannot, right? So the idea is, there's 25 ounces in a bottle, with one sealed bottle, you make one person happy. If you have 25 ounces, you make 25 people happy. And the standard, like serving size, one ounce or 16 ounce for beer, five ounce for wine, is what we would adhere to. We're looking to do no more than two, two standard servings. And as you guys pointed out, everybody is Basset certified, so Basset is actually more already towards the on-premise consumption side of things anyway, as it stands. So everybody, we also are tip certified, too. I know it's not necessarily recognized by the Village, but.
Okay, and could you also state your name and address for the record?
Marcel Oshansky, and I'm the owner of Liquor Barn.
Okay. Questions from the board?
So how would this really be, do you do wine tastings?
We do, we do wine tastings.
What would be the difference other than, I don't know, bourbon has a higher?
So the only difference really is the standard serving size.
Right.
For wine, for wine tastings, the standard size is one ounce.
Right.
This would be available for purchase up to five ounces.
You could buy five ounces and, while they're in the store, drink five ounces of bourbon and then?
No, no, bourbon would be one ounce.
Okay, okay.
So you're saying you could buy five different samples, one ounce each?
No, no, when we were, I was referring to wine, wine is a five-ounce standard serving. Bourbon, any hard spirits are one ounce, beer is 16 ounce for standard serving.
So did you charge for the wine when you did wine sampling?
No, so vendor samplings are free, unless we're doing a larger off-site or in-store tasting. Those are, sometimes they're held to like a $40 entrance fee or something, if it's a little bit higher-end item, but typically, there's no charge. We do have tastings every weekend, I think it's fairly common, but those are all, for wine samples, are one ounce, spirits are quarter ounce.
So really?
Okay, thank you, David. So I'm just going to, so if I'm like buying, if I'm tasting spirits, it's not really, like, you're charging me?
Yeah, it would be a purchased charge.
So it's not a sample?
It's not a sample, no. Yeah, it's probably a little misleading that.
So does that change the ordinance? Because it says, does it say sampling in the ordinance? Because it's a sale, is what it is, right?
It's a sale, yes.
At this moment, the ordinance doesn't exist. What we're trying to put together here is if there is interest in doing it, we have some models. The Libertyville one that Mr. Oshansky provided me is probably the closest to what he's describing here. It does define a serving size by type of alcohol, and it states that no more than two servings of any combination of those things would be permitted to any customer any given day. So if, if the board is interested in those types of limitations, we can write something that would match that, but at this point, there is nothing specific drafted.
So in some respect, you're sort of converting a bit more to a bar, in a sense. You're, you're charging for a full-size portion of a particular drink, that might be a fancier drink, that's a one-off bottle that you've acquired, but, but in a sense, there'll be people gathered, maybe even a group of friends that are each buying, you said, the equivalent of two drinks worth, so they can have two one-ounce shots.
And it would be, it would be smaller than your standard.
No, it's not.
So your typical bar pour is about an ounce and a half to two ounces, this would be a one-ounce pour.
A typical flight of, when you're doing a beer flight, there, anywhere from four to six ounces, usually four to five, but max six, as opposed to a 15 or 16 ounce, and, and a standard glass of wine in most restaurants is probably about eight or nine ounces, at least, about nine, yeah.
Five ounce seems pretty small in a restaurant.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not looking to convert.
It's about half of what you get a standard.
Thank you for your expertise.
I believe, though, too, is that, just stating that you could go into Whole Foods, and while you're shopping, get a glass of wine, and I believe the, I think at Mariano's.
I don't know if Mariano's.
I don't know, but I know, I know Whole Foods does it, and I've seen there is, I can't think of the, can't think of the, the store that's in Antioch. I was up there doing work, and I, they constantly had some sort of sale going on where they had tasting. And I, I'd walked in just to see it, and it was sort of amazing, so.
Yeah, it just seems to be just the general industry trend, where Illinois has recognized that it's a, there's a dual on-premise, off-premise consumption, or combination license, they call it.
Yeah, and with the, with the, the Basset training and, and the limitations on it, I don't really see a problem with it, and I would think it would, in a way, help business as well. I mean, especially if you're doing, you know, some of the more.
Exotic.
Yeah, the more allocated.
Collectible.
Type items. And this is something that we're going to be implementing in all our stores, Vernon Hills is the first.
I don't see a problem with it, because even Melanie Farms has on, on some special weekends for food and drink. You have to, it has to be in a certain area, but we do that here.
Are you counting on the two-drink limit being handled by the person, obviously, manning the area, and are you going to, what about like, will the same person be there for a certain amount of time?
Yeah.
Change, that kind of thing?
Yeah, there's going to be one employee responsible for it anytime they're on shift. We don't expect it to, you know, constantly be occupied. This is more just, somebody walks into the store, hey, wow, you guys have this, can I try it?
Well, and if you're talking about some of those higher-end bourbons, you're probably talking about a significant price just for an ounce.
Yeah, we're, yeah, it's about $20 to $25 an ounce, we're not, you know, pouring $3 shots.
Do all of our other establishments require food if it's more than just a sample size?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, we were looking to do, if it's a larger event, you know, just have pretzels individually bagged, or pub mix, something like that.
So it would be basically just snacks?
Dry snacks, yeah. Peanuts.
But you wouldn't be, we wouldn't, the ordinance not require them to serve food?
No.
Is that correct?
No.
And where would the location of your sampling be in the store?
So when you walk in, it, it's kind of actually already segregated by itself, it's where we have our single barrels already. It's a left-side wall, just a nice-looking brick accent wall.
It's going to be like a table set up?
Yeah, there's a table set up, mobile tasting bar, so. It's the area we actually already use for in-store samplings, is what we want to use.
Chief, you have, want to add anything?
I'm, I'm wondering if, if you've thought about, is there a threshold of how either frequent, or what's, what, what in your mind is the value proposition here? Because you can come into your store and get a vendor sample of a $25 or $30 bottle of spirits anytime, and that's a half-ounce pour, or a quarter ounce.
Quarter ounce.
Yeah, so just a taste, how frequently do you think this will likely be going on? Is this every weekend you expect to have?
So this would be open, actually, seven days a week. I don't expect people to be lining up, you know, on Friday or Saturday to sit there and go to the bar, essentially. That's not what the idea is behind it, we're not expecting to have seating or anything like that. It's more for people to come in, try something that they normally would never be able to try.
Yeah, and that was the question, I guess that was the point of my question, is there a threshold, is the, is the board might consider, what are the conditions, what, what is in your mind, are you, it sounds like you're not going to do this for a standard bottle of Jim Beam that costs?
No.
$16, right? But if, is, is there a threshold in your mind that makes sense, or the rarity of this, or I'm just?
So it's kind of hard to define price or rarity, because there's some bourbons that are $29.99, but they're just unobtainable.
I see.
You get three bottles a month. So it's very, very hard to define that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the, from the board? Anything than what you're looking for is direction to prepare an ordinance?
So I think the, the handful of questions that I would have, if, if I'm reading that there's consensus that there's no major concern with this, as we work to prepare a licensed class, my initial thought on this would, it would be a supplementary license, the B would be left alone, and they'd have a supplementary license, that it'll allow very limited on-premise consumption at a B-licensed establishment. If that is acceptable, I would move ahead with that. If the idea is that it would become, you know, a B1 or something, I would move ahead with that. So I'm flexible either way, but some guidance as to how you'd like to see this structured would be part one for me, and then the rest of it would just be the operational concerns, the limitations that we discussed based on the Libertyville license in terms of number of servings and what constitutes a serving. If everyone's comfortable with that, we can, we can basically copy what they've done and incorporate it that way. If there is any specific direction about identifying a space within the establishment and keeping it to that one spot, we can incorporate that as well.
That all sounds.
I would want to throw one thing in there that possibly could help that ordinance, is if you put a size restriction on it for stores over, call it 7,500 square feet, 10,000 square feet, to really eliminate any issues that, and have it truly become more of like a sampling slash tasting bar than a bar in a store.
So this potentially, anyone who's, I don't know how many Class B licenses we have outstanding right now, but anyone with a Class B could potentially get the supplement, is that correct?
I suppose it depends on if there's something like a size restriction to it, but yes.
There's seven, are they all liquor stores? Or is it grocery stores, too? Okay. But gas station, I was asking Jim, that would, like, you know, gas stations sell liquor, that would not be a Class B liquor license?
Don't have a gas station license, we have a convenience store that doesn't sell gas license.
I just want to start seeing like convenience store, like, you know, becoming the trend here.
Yeah, but they're not getting the stuff that they're getting.
It doesn't matter, they can sell whatever they want.
Yeah, I know, but you've got to understand, this is with bourbon, tequila, I mean, I've seen some ridiculous pricing on like tequilas.
You, you open the door for, you open the door.
I see your point, yeah.
You get.
Because we don't, we don't have a minimum dollar amount.
You open the bar, you get the bar crowd.
Yeah.
That's why I was suggesting the size restriction to it. I don't think there's many 10,000-square-foot gas stations.
So is that pretty much where we're at, then, 10,000 square feet?
So the E license is what you see for the mini-marts, the B license would be your typical off-premise consumption, which would be mostly, mostly the liquor stores, the larger liquor stores. But yeah, if, if the committee is in favor of some sort of threshold, Palatine uses 5,000, we could raise that to something like 7,500, if the idea is that you do want it to be limited to larger.
What was Libertyville's threshold, do you remember?
Oh, goodness.
I didn't see it.
They actually, they did it as a separate license.
Do we have any that are between 5,000 and 7,500 that are currently licensed that we'd be eliminating?
I do not know that.
Libertyville didn't have a size restriction.
Yeah, I do, I don't see a size restriction, and I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. Do you have any preference as to whether or not we create an, an add-on certificate license versus creating a new category? Does it really matter?
It, I don't think it matters all that much. I think it's probably cleanest to just leave the B alone and have a supplementary license.
Supplementary license, yeah, instead of bothering with changing a whole category.
Exactly. Would allow them to drop it if they do want to drop it.
Is there going to be an extra cost for having that add-on?
We, we could establish a minimal fee with the assumption that they have, they are holding another license.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would just be curious to know what, so as not to show too much favoritism for just the larger stores to know what we would be eliminating, if anything, if we set a number at 75 versus 5,000.
I could certainly bring that back. Once this is drafted, I could bring that back with that information.
If you let us know who currently exists holding these types of licenses, then we can, we can see if they all qualify.
Yeah, that would help, to make sure we're not, as trustee Schenk pointed out, we don't be opening too big a door.
You also want to eliminate equal competition, too, because if you've got liquor stores that are, say, like 4,000 square feet, but still have the same capacity.
Right.
Yeah.
We can bring a draft ordinance back to the committee of the whole for review, so you see the detail of it. We get, and then bring it to the Village Board after that.
Okay.
With that list, that'd be great.
Any other?
I have a question.
Sure. Mayor, go ahead.
What, what effect does it give on these men's competitors as far as them bringing someone who represents the manufacturer of the liquor involved? They provide their own people, and they provide their own, obviously, license to serve on, on a, in a premise such as this. Maybe he can speak to that. Does that affect your liquor license and dram shop liability?
Well, I, well dram shop, on that question, I think you would need to obtain dram shop insurance if you're selling and serving liquor. That would be part of the ordinance. Mayor, we would require that. So was that your question? If dram shop would be required, I, I would say yes.
Right, but what happens if somebody comes in, whoever makes the bourbon, provides all their own people?
Oh, you mean, yeah, like when a manufacturer creates it? No, there, it would, we would have to make sure that it's, that it's the store in control at all times, I would assume. Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what it's done, but that's why I bring it up.
Well, what do you do for Mariana's? They do it all the time. They got representatives selling their pitch and their whatever.
Their wines, yeah.
All of those samplers, they're usually BACIT certified, or I believe they have to be BACIT certified.
Because it's gonna roll down to you.
Yep.
Whether they're.
Yeah, so our employees would be the ones serving. In this area in particular, it would not be somebody from an outside company. We would set them up on a mobile table.
From an outside company?
Roger, can you repeat that?
Hey Roger, I'm sure there's, they've got liability insurance that covers it, Mariana's, Kroger. I'm, I'm a hundred percent sure.
No, I, I understand that part, but again, you know, if, if they, if the, if the actual manufacturer sends people in, maybe that limits his liability.
I'll ask a question because I think you, you've done it, but on special events, I'll use us in, like summer celebration, we have a beer tent. I've seen in some areas, not here, but that have had bourbon tests or tasting, and you sell the bottle. Am I correct? I believe you do that.
So you can, if you're selling the bottle off the premise, typically what you do is you'll collect the per, the customer's information and then you'll actually ring the sale at the store.
And you're covered through your policies for insurance, I would believe, in selling it off the premise.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, that one really does cover, these event liabilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a.
That's why. All the time.
That's where I'm going.
Totally specific.
That's where I'm going.
Believe me, people are not stupid.
That's where I'm going, that's why I said it. Well, so should we just have, go ahead and bring back a model ordinance and then go from there? Because then we'll have the additional information of what places in town and, and then we can go from there in terms of the discussion?
Yeah, I can, I can draft something and bring it back.
Okay.
To the committee of the whole.
Is everybody, is that the consensus of the board that we, we need to see the draft? Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your time. All right, next item is Anton Parr USA, six hundred Hickory Hill, concept review for a new industrial building?
Thank you. Anton Parr is a manufacturer and distributor of precision equipment related to the measurement and analysis of dissolved carbon dioxide. They are currently located on Lakeview Parkway. As I understand, they've been in town for about four years. This, the facility on Lakeview Parkway is the, the, the office for a twelve-state region. Now that they've established in this area, they are looking to purchase property and construct their own building. The, for the committee of the whole this evening, we are requesting conceptual review of the proposed light industrial building, both in terms of its, the, the site plan and the appearance. Just a quick note before I introduce the representatives of the business. The, the site, as you can see, is developed with a parking lot. I've done some research into that parking lot and did confirm that it is not required parking for any other building. It was built for, if you see just to the south across the street, there was a, a larger tenant in that space at one point who had elected to build auxiliary parking across the street for their employees. So it is not required parking. It is possible to sell it separate from the lot across the street. We're not aware of any agreement or covenant that ties the two properties together. With that, what I'd like to do is go ahead and introduce Mark Daniel and Jorge Gonzalez so they can come up and provide a background on the company and a description of the proposal.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Daniel. Jorge Gonzalez is the vice president in charge of the central region for Anton Parr. Anton Parr is a large multinational corporation. You actually have a U.S. exclusive distributor that is Anton Parr USA, and that's what we're working with now. They decided to open four different regions across the U.S., and I'll have Jorge talk about that initially. I am here as an attorney. I've represented Leaf Fry Enterprises for years. I'd known Leaf Fry for a long time, and we've scattered out a number of locations for a number of different clients. Anton Parr is currently based in town, and I can tell you that a couple of years ago, they knew that they would have to expand. And they're looking in Vernon Hills now at this location, and there were other locations previously. This one so happens to be one that fits from a zoning perspective. I have not been involved in the process because it meets all the regulations of the zoning ordinance. The building elevations that we'll show you look solid. The use fits within the business park.
Can we stop for one second? Mayor's been disconnected.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure, sir.
One second.
All right.
Sorry.
Hello?
Hello, Mayor?
Hello.
Okay.
All right, so, so that we're, we're clear, I'm not sure where we lost you, Mayor Burn, on this side of things, but Anton Parr is a large multinational corporation. We had identified sites for them in a couple of other communities, and then we found one here in Vernon Hills that would allow them to remain in town. I'm gonna let Jorge Gonzalez speak, and then I'll dive into the presentation and repeat some of what I said about the zoning compliance and other things as I get into the presentation. So Jorge, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself in Anton Parr?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jorge Gonzalez, and I, like Mark said, I represent the central region for Anton Parr USA. We cover twelve states within the Midwest to support customers in a capacity of selling and servicing their scientific instrumentation. Anton Parr USA started operations in nineteen eighty-six out of an office in Ashland, Virginia. Up until two thousand eighteen, we were operating as a, as a one central office covering the whole USA and part of the Caribbean. And in twenty eighteen, the company decided to split into three different regions. They started operations in California, Texas, and we, we stayed in Ashland, Virginia, covering half of the territory. In twenty nineteen, we established the office here in Vernon Hills to finally bring our, our services and instruments closer to our customers. And back in twenty nineteen, we started with twelve employees in the office. The company is, is growing rapidly. We, we went from starting with twelve, twelve employees, up until today, we are eighteen people. We outgrew our space in the, in the current office, and we are definitely in need of expanding our operations. We expect that in five more years, we double our size and employees to thirty-six, and Anton Parr is, is offering good job opportunities for, for the local people. I don't know if.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
And certainly we answer any, any questions as they arise. Let me see if I can, all right, we've got it up there already. So you can see that this, this building somewhat fits the analysis of their use. It's, it's not a retail use, it's not manufacturing, it's testing, research, and, and some servicing. In the blue space that you can see on the slide here, you can see how the loading is tucked away. It's not readily apparent. The front of the building is to the right where you can see the feature entryway. Above that entryway, you're gonna have some office space and the like. The blue end of the building is two floors. As far as elevation, floor to ceiling, it's a tall ceiling. The rest of the building is a two-story building. The main entrance has two wall signs above it. Once we, we take a look at the view from Hickory Hills, you'll see that the handicap parking spaces are the first thing you see, the front of the building, where you see, you see a little more articulation of the building and the main feature foyer for the entrance. The right side of this slide is where you'll have your view from Hickory Hills. If you go to the next one, that would help. This is the second floor plan. Again, you can see it's, it's primarily office, open floor plan. That could be demolished over time, but you can see the left side has a solid wall. That's the first floor looking down. As far as the site's concerned, there are a lot of municipalities that would be ecstatic to be able to convert waste, excess parking. All your comprehensive planning that you see today coaches against having excess parking. This is perfect for, for Vernon Hills. Any community would like to be able to pull this off. You're replacing this parking lot with thirty-six well-paying jobs and an address for a, a large national corporation that has global connections. I'm not gonna get too much into the technical detail because that's what we're asking to move on to next, but because it is a parking lot, we don't see stormwater concerns. There was also a prior landscape plan that was approved. To the extent that during permitting, trees have to be removed because of any pavement work or curb work, there's going to be a tree replacement plan or some other plan as part of that permit process. Some of that may come up during the appearance and design review process, but there's no intent to seek relief from any tree preservation or tree replacement requirements. And certainly, we did provide a tree survey, so I, I think that was concluded somewhat early on. As far as the elevations concerned, what was up there was the view from Hickory Hill. That was the articulated portion of the building that has different features. The feature to the right in this image sticks out a little bit from the remainder of the building, and you can see the main entrance towards, towards the left. The signage on the building is modest. There is some trade dress that spills over into the building, and, and you can see that. It does feature quite a bit of glass, and it is a modern building, which is, is something that you'd like to see with new construction today. All right, the next slide shows you the elevation, if you work your way around the left side of the building, opposite the loading zone entrance. You can see that the rear of the building is where the loading and the, the heavy work in the two area, the, the two-story area of the building occurs. Again, the loading is set up so the screen for the loading zone transitions to the remainder of the architecture of the building. Instead of continuing that solid wall to the roof line, you have the windows continuing so that there's consistency across the entire left elevation of the building. And I think that also occurs on the next slide, which is the right elevation of the building. And there you can see, again, that transition, you can see that the loading zone is, is minimal compared to everything else that's going on on-site. It doesn't dominate the site. There's not a need for that substantial loading. It's not a distribution facility. What happens is, is that parts are tested before they go out to the purchasers. If there's an issue with a part, it could be brought in and tested and recertified. One of the things that, that Anton Parr does, I mean, there's, there's probably quite a bit that in our lives, we experience the results of their work. Anything that relates to do with carbon, carbon dioxide testing, the soft drinks. My wife's at Rush, and she deals with pharmaceuticals a lot. She saw this plan laying out and said, what are, what are you doing there? Sometimes folks that she works with have to get certified. Anton Parr does that. So if they have a device that needs to be recalibrated over the years, that's what they do. Before a device goes out in the market, they have to certify it and test it. For us, it's probably UL to people who are buying electric products. You know, that's the process that they have to go through, and they, and they are a market leader in that. All right, the next slide, questions and answers. As, as far as parking's concerned, I think the staff memo covered it. This is excess parking, and the parking resulting after the building's constructed will still have excess parking. As far as traffic into and from the parking lot, the industrial park, I'm sorry, the, the research park is set up in a way that they have covenants and declarations, and they have to maintain certain guidelines. Those have been reviewed on our side of things, and we can comply with those. Mr. Jennings was correct when he talked about the buildings not being tied together. At times, you can go back and you can look through CBR listings or other listings, and you might see this parking lot and another building tied together. This is a separate piece of property. And Mayor, I'm not sure if you, if you heard the, the initial comments that I made, but I do a lot of this work throughout the Chicago region, down to even our COLA where I represented the Lubman-Broom Company. And we deal with these, these issues where you've got folks that, that need to grow in place, and we were looking at some other communities. And you've got a good law firm that represents several communities. I'm sure that they could think of numerous locations for this site. There were other options outside of Vernon Hills, and they settled on this location because it, it fits so well with, with their design. As soon as they are able to get bids out, they will do so, and they will get underway with this project. This is not speculation with any other location. They are in Vernon Hills now, and they, they would like to remain. We would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Trusty Oppenheimer?
I think that was a great presentation. The building looks very nice to me, and I'm glad that you're paving over a parking lot to build a building.
It helps.
But no, I have no concerns.
I have no concerns.
Any other? I mean, this looks like a, a building that fits very well into what's already there. It, it, it completely fits with what the zoning and everything is, correct? I mean, there's no, nothing that's gonna be any significant variation of any kind?
I have not found any on the preliminary review. If for some reason we do find something through the course of the technical review, this would be published as a public hearing and not just a public meeting with planning and zoning.
And again, this is just the beginning. It has to go through a number of, of layers of review.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other?
If I may?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, with tonight's concept approval, hi, Mark, good to see you.
Good to see you, Jim.
Tonight is not a formal approval, as you know. It's your opportunity to get some input from the board. There's a consensus that this should move forward. The board does have a right to change its position relative to conditioning things further if, if they decide to do that. With this consensus tonight, you're being directed to proceed to technical review, to finalize your plans. You'll then go before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation to the village board.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for getting us on before the budget.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, final item on tonight's agenda is the proposed FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget presentation?
Okay, good evening. So we will begin our.
Okay. Final item on tonight's agenda is the proposed FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget presentation.
Okay, good evening. So we will begin our our presentation for the draft fiscal year 2024 budget, which covers the period from May first of 2023, ending April thirtieth of 2024. Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment to thank the village staff for their help in in putting this together. There are many people behind the scenes that have a hand in in doing this process, many who've never make it into this room, that assist our different departments in getting quotes and pricing and and sharpening those pencils. So we appreciate all of their efforts. I'd also like to especially thank Laura Florrie and our new finance director, Tom Lyons, for the work on putting together and managing this process. Tom, as you know, has not even been here two months yet, and so this is a pretty big task in his first few weeks on the job to to begin this process and get this going, so I appreciate those efforts. The draft budget that you had before you that was distributed two weeks ago is intended for discussion purposes. And this evening and at our next committee of the whole meeting, staff is looking for feedback and direction by the board to begin preparation for the final fiscal year budget. Refinements and any adjustments to the budget will be made based on the board's direction this evening and at the March twenty-first committee of the whole meeting, and also after any additional refinements from staff's final review of the numbers. It is anticipated that the final budget document will be presented to the board at the April eighteenth regular Village Board meeting for final adoption and approval. And lastly, I just wanted to touch on some of the changes to the actual document itself. I had an opportunity to get some feedback from trustee Cook prior to the meeting, but you will notice that there is a new look and feel to the actual document itself. This is primarily driven by by two reasons. The first reason, first and foremost, or primarily, I should say, is this past year, the village did a significant upgrade to its financial software. And so the version of the budget that you're used to seeing, and I'll try and do my best Havana White here. This this format here, this was from a a module or report called Crystal Reports. That's obsolete now. You no longer can have access to that. So the budget document that we have here, this was actually manually created by Director Lyons. We did try, however, to provide as much detail as we could, since you're used to having that. That was located in the appendix of the document or the binder that we sent out. It is certainly not in the best format, which is why we've moved to the new format. But I understand the importance of having that detail, and I will work with Director Lyons over the next month to see how we can better lift that detail up into the budget so you can see more of the transaction detail and those changes year to year.
So can I ask, so what what software or system are we using now?
The software is called Munis. It's a it's a pretty common municipal ERP program. The challenge the village had is we were about ten versions behind. So when we did an upgrade, we upgraded almost ten years' worth of annual upgrades at at one moment.
So that Munis software used Crystal Reports as the reporting function?
It did.
And so?
It's no longer available now.
Crystal isn't?
Yeah, Crystal Reports is is obsolete.
Is defunct now, okay.
Yeah, so the so the appendix in the budget binder, that is now the version that spits out from the software, which isn't the cleanest version. So we we took the time to try and present the information more in line with how our financial report is presented to have some uniformity with that financial reporting. But it there's there's other options we can do to present the information.
Okay, and I meant to ask you, a week ago, I didn't get a chance to, is there a way to for us to get in a digital form so we don't have to lug the paper around?
I think you've made Director Lyons day with that question.
Yes, we can provide that.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll jump right in. Just a quick review of our upcoming calendar. So we have, over the next two meetings, the presentation of the draft fiscal twenty-four budget. Our first meeting in April, April fourth, we are scheduled to have our public hearing on the tentative budget and slated to adopt the budget at the April eighteenth Village Board meeting, with our fiscal year beginning on May first. You've all you're all familiar with these, but these are previously adopted by the board, Village Financial Policies. These are used as a guide for staff in drafting the budget and and getting our financial direction. I'll update and and touch on a few of these points. We're happy to report that the village still maintains its AAA bond rating. Both the fiscal year twenty-three and proposed fiscal year twenty-four budgets do not incur or take on any new village debt. And the village remains one of the few villages in Illinois to not levy a local property tax. In addition, from a capital improvement standpoint, we continue to use a pay-as-you-go approach and utilizing cash reserves for what we've coined mega projects. A good example of that this coming year is our Lakeview Parkway Expansion Project. We are paying the local match on that project with cash on hand without having to incur any new village debt. More specifically, the village has adopted some budget policies that we use. I'm happy to report that our our proposed budget maintains all of the village's previously approved fund balances. We are working our best to continue with a well-communicated budget process by having our public hearing, two budget workshops, and then public comment period at the adoption of the final budget. And we're continuing to make refinements to our budget document to be more in line with Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, or GAAP. This is a very quick snapshot of the overall fund structure of our budget. There are eight total funds in in total. At this evening's meeting, we're going to be covering the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the village. We're also going to be reviewing a portion of the general fund's sub-funds, which are the Summer Celebration Committee, the DUI, Drug Forfeiture, State Seizures, and also reviewing the Dispatch Fund. And then two weeks from this evening, we will conclude with the remainder of the budget. We'll have a presentation from Kemper Sports on the Golf Fund. We'll finish up the general fund's sub-funds with the Capital Improvement Fund and the Metro Parking Fund. And then we'll also review the Replacement Fund, Motor Fuel Tax Fund, and the village's three TIF districts. So before we look at fiscal twenty-four, we're just going to do a quick recap of where we project to end up in fiscal twenty-three. Just as a kind of a note on how we arrive at our projections, these are really based on the best available data that we have at the time. In many cases, we're using year-to-date numbers that are a few months in arrears, especially when it comes to some of our revenues. So these are estimates and guestimates based on best available data. We take a very conservative approach when we arrive at these projections. So it's likely that when we have our audit later this year and we have our actual final report for fiscal twenty-three performance, these these expenses will be under, some of these revenues will be over. But the goal of this exercise is to really help us arrive at a an estimated general fund balance so that we can use that to start on May one with a an anticipation of what that general fund balance is going to be. So here's a quick recap of our projected fiscal year twenty-three revenues. Overall, this this slide is producing some very positive results for the village. I'll start at the top there with our sales tax and maybe a a trip down memory lane a year ago of our our budget workshop in March. If you recall, that that March first meeting was actually our first meeting back without wearing masks from the pandemic. So we had a reset in the fall of twenty-one. We were back at wearing masks. The March first workshop was our first meeting without masks again. So the point of that being is COVID nineteen at the time was still a variable and and an item of consideration as we were not only forecasting our fiscal twenty-two year-end numbers, but creating the baseline for our fiscal year twenty-three budget. So you can see our fiscal year twenty-three budget for sales tax was about sixteen point five million dollars. We're pleased to report that our current projections are showing that we're going to end the year somewhere around nineteen point seven million dollars, which is obviously a huge uptick from where we thought we would be. A portion of that, we're we're pretty sure, is related to inflation. Inflation is at a forty-year high, and I'm sure that's driving up prices. We're seeing those prices in the goods that are sold in Vernon Hills, and that then in turn is being reflected in our sales tax numbers. We're also seeing higher higher than anticipated consumer spending. There wasn't really a slowdown post-pandemic, and if you drive through Vernon Hills in the weekend, the parking lots are are still jammed. So that's that's a positive sign for the village. Home rule sales tax, obviously, up accordingly, about seven hundred thirteen thousand dollars over the projected budget. Unemployment is down in Illinois and across the country, and therefore, income tax receipts are also higher than anticipated. Director Lyons will talk about our fiscal twenty-four budget and the assumptions used for that. And then lastly, in fiscal twenty-three, we are anticipating to realize the full revenue for the American Rescue Plan Act or our ARPA funding. And I have a slide in a few minutes to talk about that. But overall, in summary, we are about seven point one million dollars above our original fiscal twenty-three budget projection. So very healthy revenue outcome ending this fiscal year. So last year, again, I I touched, we were still kind of at the tail end of the pandemic. There were certain revenues that we wanted to monitor as these were directly impacted by the pandemic and and really gauge how the health of these revenues was coming back or not coming back in the year. The first one we'll touch on is our hotel and motel tax. As you can see on the left, pre-pandemic, this this revenue was about just under three hundred thirty thousand dollars a year. The following year took a very big hit as a result of the lockdowns. Business travel pretty much came to a halt. Vacation travel was not happening. We had a bounce back in fiscal twenty-two, going up to a hundred ninety thousand dollars roughly. Our fiscal twenty-three budget is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for this revenue. Right now, we're projecting to be at just about two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. So the good news there is that it looks like travel is back, whether it's business travel or or leisure travel, and that revenue is not back to pre-pandemic levels, but on pace to to hopefully return there soon. The second revenue we were keeping our eye on again, which had a a very direct impact from the COVID pandemic, was our amusement tax. As a reminder, this is a four percent tax on movie theater ticket sales. Pre-pandemic, we were just over two hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue. Right at the heart of the pandemic in fiscal twenty-one, down to almost nothing, seventeen thousand dollars. Movie theaters started to open back up in twenty-two. Movies were being released again into movie theaters. We climbed back to a hundred thirty-seven thousand. Our budget for this fiscal year in twenty-three is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and we're projected to be almost right on pace with that at a hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. Going forward with this item, there's a couple of things we're going to continue to keep our eye on. You've you've read in the papers recently that in our area, there have been a lot of movie theaters that have been closing. We're fortunate that AMC Hawthorne is is still here and and going strong. So we're going to keep our eye on to see how that change in the market might impact Hawthorne Mall and and the AMC. But on the flip side, you're you're also seeing more and more Hollywood studios release movies straight to streaming. And so the real question is going to be, are movies going to come back to the movie theaters or is that whole trend going to go away? So we'll continue to keep our eye on that. But we're also optimistic that as our AMC is really kind of the anchor point to Hawthorne two point oh, that the synergy from that project will will help the theater out. I mentioned earlier our ARPA funds or the American Rescue Plan Act. As you remember, this was approved back in early two thousand twenty-one as a stimulus to municipalities that were impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. The village of Vernon Hills was allotted about three point six million dollars, which we received in two installments in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. The U.S. Department of the Treasury came out with final rules last year regarding the use of these funds. It's been communicated in the past and discussed that the the easiest option for the village in this case was to take the standard allowance of up to ten million, ten million dollars of lost revenue. Basically, what that means is the three point six million dollars that we received could be used to go for any eligible government expenditures, which is pretty much everything under the sun, with the exception of police pension or pension payments and debt service payments. And so the ARPA money that we received in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, when we get that money, it's it's received as a deferred revenue until it's expensed. So our current plan is to realize the full revenues in fiscal twenty-three and to expense those funds on eligible public safety payroll. And in doing that, the recognition of this revenue in fiscal twenty-three will result in an increase of the general fund balance of about three point six million dollars, or the equivalent of our ARPA monies. So that's that's going to be an increase of the grant money. Fiscal twenty-four, none of that grant money will be reflected as a revenue. So on the expense side from a projections, overall, our our projections are looking either in line with budget or just under budget, with the exception of two categories. I'm going to make a note real quick. There's a a red star next to that four hundred ninety thousand dollars under the projected column. That actually should be a zero. We're not expecting to have any contingency expenses at the end of the year. And if you recall from last year, we padded the contingency line to incorporate some of the cost of living increases to our our personnel as a result of the ongoing collective bargaining that was happening during the budget process. So we've taken that three hundred forty thousand dollars of COLA increase. That's reflected in the projected line up under the salaries and wages line, and the hundred fifty thousand dollars will will not be a cost by the end of this year. So the new subtotal would be actually the one point three million, not the one point eight million. Salaries and wages, other than the the cost of living increase I just talked about, there's two other items that were not accounted for in the fiscal twenty-three budget, the first being the transition of our Community Development Director position. As you recall, there was about two months of overlap with Director Jennings and Director Atkinson. So that was extra salary that we incurred as a result of that. And then also, the fiscal year twenty-three budget did not include any salary benefits for the in-house finance director. We're going to have about four months of Director Lyons. That's going to be reflected in that number. The other item is an increase in economic development and sales tax rebate payments. As I mentioned earlier, our sales tax was significantly up from budget. Therefore, in turn, our our sales tax rebates as a percentage of that are up as well, primarily our CDW payment, our sales tax rebate payment, which is about fifty-six percent of their overall sales that we receive from them each fiscal year. This is the same information here, just by department. Item one there, our administration is is under about eighty thousand dollars. There were a handful of IT equipment and software purchases that did not take place this year. So that's why that number is lower. The other the other public works and police lines are above, going back to that that COLA number not being included in those salary lines within their respective departments. And then I touched on in the general purpose, that's where our economic incentive payments is made. Our general fund transfers are are right on point. There is a a note there for our three TIF transfers. The actual dollars there, we just had those wrapped up actually last week. For the Town Center TIF, the general fund expense is going to be two hundred twelve thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars. For Melody Farm TIF, three hundred ninety-one thousand, thirty-four dollars. And the Hawthorne Mall TIF, which is still still very young, three thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars. And as a reminder, because the village does not levy a local property tax, the TIF Act requires that the general fund contribute ten percent of the annual increment that's received by each respective TIF district. So to kind of get to just a a conclusion on what's the overall health of our our fiscal year and how we're going to start or projecting to start next fiscal year. As you all know, we have a a target fund balance for our general fund. This is the policy up here, which was adopted back in two thousand twelve. It's that no less than sixty percent, sixty-seven percent of our annual operating and debt service expenditures, that that needs to be the the overall balance in our our general fund. So that equates to about twenty point four million dollars of a balance to meet that sixty-seven percent. So this is a breakdown of 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 a summary of the slides I just went through. You can look at the middle column for the projected fiscal year twenty-three performance. We started the the fiscal year on May one, twenty twenty-two with a balance of thirty-three million, five hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars. We're going to have revenues and other sources of about forty-one point two million dollars, expenditures of thirty-three point five million dollars, which is going to give us a projected end-of-year fund balance of forty-one point two million dollars, or a hundred thirty-five percent funded. So a very healthy general fund position. If there is any questions on fiscal twenty-three, I can answer those. Otherwise, I can turn things over to Director Lyons to cover a high level of the fiscal twenty-four proposed budget.
All right. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor Timoney. Thank you, Mayor Byrne and Village Board, for the opportunity to present this year's proposed budget. I'm going to cover the proposed budget at a high level over the following slides. Department budgets will follow. So, as staff planned the proposed fiscal 24 budget, there were several assumptions and factors that played key roles in its development. This budget assumes an increase to the cost of living adjustments, or COLA plan, for non-union employees of 3.25%. Village Manager Timoney sent a memo last week to the board regarding this non-union COLA increase recommendation. Cost of living and step raises for union employees are included in their respective collective bargaining agreements. High inflation is a major consideration in this budget. Over the last two calendar years, the change in CPI has been approximately three times the 10-year average. The higher inflation is expected to continue into the next year and slowly decline, at a slowly declining pace. Low unemployment continues to feed the labor shortage, and supply chain delays are still being realized. The delay specifically pronounced with the purchases of vehicles and large equipment. Interest rates over the past year have risen, providing opportunities to generate more investment income to help offset some of the cost of inflation. You will see significant increases in projected and budgeted investment income compared to the prior years. With talks of mild recession possibilities in the economics world, this has driven us to take a conservative approach to establishing this year's budgeted revenues. Take a look at the revenues here first. To add some historical trend data, I presented five columns of activity covering four fiscal years. From left to right, actual revenues reported for both fiscal 21 and fiscal 22, fiscal 23 budget and projected actual, as well as the proposed fiscal 24 budget. Note, fiscal 21 reflects the results from the COVID lockdown. Starting at the top, sales tax is the village's most significant revenue source. This top line includes revenue from the municipal 1% sales tax. Sales tax generated from the low of COVID to the proposed budget amount has increased $5.8 million, or 42%. This really includes no significant new large retail added to the mix. This growth occurred essentially with the same retail base. When comparing this to the 2008 recession, which took five years to recover to pre-recession sales tax levels, sales tax revenues recovered the COVID pandemic within one year after the economy was shut down due to COVID. This is the same story for the home rule sales tax, as this is driven by the same economic factors. Tick mark two shows the progression of income taxes. The proposed budget reflects continued strength in incomes, which is supported by low unemployment, but is slightly below where the revenue is projected to finish up in the current year. This revenue is based on per capita share amount and distributed by the state. We followed the Illinois Municipal League's per capita estimate for fiscal 24, which is $155.85 per capita. Again, the official population of the village is 26,850 people. Moving down to license permits and fees, tick mark three, the $3.1 million proposed budget includes approximately $2 million of commercial and residential permit revenue, while the remaining $1 million is made up of business licenses, franchise fees, and other community development-related fees. Director Jennings will break the permits further down later in this presentation. Tick mark four, reviewing the grant revenue line. This line has had two large spikes over the past four years, once in fiscal year 21, which related to the CARES Act funding, and again in fiscal year 23, which related to the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA. Now that these allotments have been received and spent, the proposed budget has been significantly The investment income budget has been increased to reflect increased market rates. For example, the Illinois funds is a local government investment pool where the village holds significant deposits. The Illinois funds rate in December of '21 was 0.06% versus the same rate in December of '22, which is 3.9%. Rates are 65 times greater than they were. To put this in perspective, if you had $10 million earning 0.06%, this would generate the $6,000 of income per year. If you had the same $10 million earning 3.9%, you would generate $390,000 per year. In total, the general fund's proposed budget includes $39 million in revenue. This is down from the projected fiscal 23 revenue of $42 million, which is related to the reduction of the $3.6 million in ARPA grant revenue. This next slide shows the breakdown of the proposed budget revenues in the general fund. When combined, the two sales tax revenues generate 62% of the general fund revenues. When adding on the income, food and beverage, hotel motel, and amusement taxes, as well as the permits, nearly 90% of the general fund's revenue sources are economically sensitive and will ebb and flow with the economic cycles. Many of these revenue sources also subject to other external factors, such as the state of Illinois. As these revenues are critical to providing village services, this is one reason a substantial fund balance is necessary. A traditional Illinois municipality would have at least 50% of its revenue generated through a property tax levy. Property taxes provide a stable revenue source through economic cycles. This allows a traditional municipality to hold a smaller fund balance and provide a consistent service level. Based on decisions of past village boards, the village has been able to provide its services and establish a healthy fund balance without the need of a property tax levy. Since sales taxes are the key revenue sources for the village, it's important to review the data in depth. This slide displays the monthly sales tax revenue received by the village over the last three fiscal years. This visual depicts the upward movement of sales taxes, beginning with the blue line, fiscal 21, or the lowest level impacted by COVID shutdowns, up to the orange line, fiscal year 22, and then finally to the gray line, fiscal year 23. The gap between the blue and the orange line represents the COVID recovery, and the gap between the orange line and the gray line represents the impact of inflation and likely additional consumer spending. I'd like to move your attention to the gray line, as this is the fiscal year 23, or the current year, which has not yet been completed. At the time of the budget preparation, we have actual sales data through November. This known data is represented by the solid gray line. For the months unknown, projections were calculated. These projections reflected by the gray dash line. To calculate these projected months, the last five years of sales tax data by month was analyzed. Since the generation of sales taxes is seasonal and not consistent from month to month, we identify what percentage of the total annual sales were generated each month. For example, due to the holiday shopping season, the highest sales taxes generated month is typically December, where the village receives on average 11% of its annual sales tax revenue. Based on these determined percentages by month, if we know that historically by November, we have received, let's say, 60% of the year's sales tax revenue, we can calculate how much the remaining 40% will be, and this will be used as a basis of the projection. This projection is then supplemented with any known factors, such as economic downturns, new businesses coming online, or businesses closing. We do know that Hawthorne Mall project will generate additional sales taxes when the stores come online, but is not yet known when those stores will begin to generate sales. So, this was not yet included in the proposed budget. Continuing to break down sales taxes, this slide shows the diversity of the sales tax generating base and how reliant the village is on the top 50 businesses that generate this tax. Focusing on the box on the left, the bottom line shows 62% of the sales tax generated is done by the top 10 businesses. This is down from 67% in the prior year, meaning relative to the overall business mix, the sales tax base outside of the top 10 businesses grew. As the overall sales tax generating base changes, the top 10 businesses will impact sales tax revenue generation less, meaning the more we can grow and diversify the tax base, the less reliant we'll be on the top generating businesses. To look at the significance of the top 10 sales tax generating businesses a different way, 62% of the general fund revenues are generated from sales taxes. 62% of all sales taxes are generated from those top 10 businesses. Any changes in these top 10 businesses, again, will impact the village's revenue. This is another reason to hold a significant fund balance. Moving to the box on the right, this shows the diversity of the breakdown by industry. Now, to review general fund expenditures, the following comparison slides show the dollar and percentage change of the proposed budget compared to the prior year's budget in the right two columns. As I touched on the noteworthy items, I direct your attention to salaries and wages line, tick mark one. The general fund salaries and wages proposed budget includes an increase of 7.9% over last year's budget. The proposed budget includes salary for the new in-house finance director, where the prior budget did not. After adjusting for this change year-over-year increase, is adjusted to 6.3%, which is more in line with the expected COLA and step raises of the compensation plan during the year. The proposed budget includes a 1.9% reduction in employee benefits, as recent changes in the health insurance plan and the reduction of the police pension contribution generated some savings. Next item I would like to call out is the payment in lieu of taxes, tick mark three. As you know, the village does not levy a property tax. In regards to TIF funds, where the local municipality does not levy a property tax, by law, the general fund must contribute to the TIF funds, 10% of the annual tax increment received by each TIF fund. This payment in lieu of taxes line represents the general fund's contribution to the TIF funds. In the past, the village has accounted for these payments as a transfer between funds, as Kevin noted. As these payments are expenditure of the general fund and not a transfer between funds, reporting this line, reporting this item as an expenditure more accurately reflects the expenditures of the general fund. Tick mark four represents the increase of the economic incentive payments, or sales tax rebate payments. Again, Kevin mentioned that on the projected 23 actual. Again, that's going to carry over into the 24 budget, as these are a function of sales tax revenue. When the revenue increases, these payments will increase. Overall, general fund proposed expenditures are up 9.7%, but when the new payment in lieu of taxes and economic incentive lines are backed out, the overall increase in general fund expenditures is 2.4%. As the village is made an operating fund, the general fund may transfer monies to other village funds to allow particular funds to carry out uninterrupted services they provide. Starting with the top line on this slide, tick mark one, the proposed budget includes a transfer to the dispatch fund of $650,000 during the year. The purpose of this transfer is to maintain a positive fund balance in dispatch fund at year-end. Chief Grease and his team will cover the dispatch fund later in this presentation. Moving down to the capital fund line, transfer to capital fund. While we don't have an adopted fund balance target in the capital fund, this transfer of $1.5 million is done to ensure the capital fund has enough fund balance to cover the proposed budget projects, as well as the following year's projects. This will help provide consistent project funding in case we have a reduction in revenues and we're unable to make a transfer in the following year. For example, if a recession does hit, we would still be in a position to continue funding ongoing projects. The last three transfers relate to the payments made to the TIF again. As I mentioned on the last slide, these will be accounted for as general fund expenditures going forward, as these are true expenditures of the general fund. This is why you see the $0 included in the proposed budget under these line items. These are the same year-over-year changes in expenditures from the prior two slides, but shown visually. Another snapshot of the general fund proposed budget expenditures is reflected in this pie chart. As an organization that provides services through people, the majority of the general fund expenditures is expected to be personnel-driven. As the chart shows, over 50% of the proposed expenditures is comprised of salaries and This slide presents the general fund expenditures by department. Further department details will be provided later in this presentation. Again, overall, proposed expenditures increased 9.7% over the prior year budget. But again, after backing out, the increase is related to sales tax rebates and the TIF increment payments, the overall increase is 2.4%. Here's another slide depicting that same information visually, again, by department. The same data presented on the previous slide. The general purpose department here includes the $1.5 million increase of sales tax rebates. Excluding transfers, this pie chart reflects the purpose of the proposed fiscal 24 budget by department. General purpose includes health insurance costs under the PCEBA law, economic incentives, debt service, and contingencies. This table shows the general purpose expenditures and transfers out. I have covered all these items on this page, except for the PCEBA health insurance and the debt service. I'll go into depth regarding debt service on the next slide, but wanted to make a quick note on the PCEBA first. The Public Safety Employment Benefits Act, or PCEBA, is an Illinois law that provides a lifetime of employer-funded insurance benefits for first responders and officers that are injured or killed in the line of duty. The draft budget presented presents a proposed budget for PCEBA of $24,500. The proposed amount should be $90,000, as the village is currently required to provide insurance for four individuals. This line will be revised accordingly for the final budget presentation. Also included in this line is a partial insurance coverage for a former village manager. Moving to the debt slide, this covers the current outstanding bonds of the village and is broken down in two sections, first being self-supporting debt and the second being debt requiring village resources. Before I jump in further, I wanted to let you know there was a typo in the second heading in your draft budget books on page 15. The second section heading in the draft book displayed as self-supporting debt, but it should be debt requiring village resources, as shown on this slide. Reviewing the columns on this slide from left to right, the first column reports the name of the bond series, which includes the year issued. The next column provides a brief purpose of the bond issuance. Two columns under the heading principal reflect the original issue amount and the outstanding principal balance beginning the fiscal 24 year. The following three columns show the fiscal 24 payments to be made as principal, interest, as well as total debt service. Lastly, on the far right, the maturity date of each bond, representing when the debt service payments will be completed and the bond fully paid off. I would like to direct your attention to the self-supporting debt section. These four bonds were issued to fund TIF-related projects in the Town Center TIF and the Melody Farm TIF. As these two TIFs are performing successfully, the full debt service payments are supported by the annual TIF increment revenue generated within the TIF funds. Moving your focus to the bottom section, debt requiring village resources, this heading means general fund revenues are used to pay the annual debt service payment on these bonds, as the village abates the property taxes to be levied for the payment of these bonds each year. The Series 2012B bonds were issued to refund prior bonds that funded a purchase of land and building from American Family Insurance to expand the police station. These bonds will be paid off in 2026. The Series 2014 bonds were issued to fund multiple projects, including projects in the Town Center TIF, the police station renovations, and the communication center renovations. Last non-TIF-related bond issued by the village were the Series 2015A bonds. These funded a village contribution towards the Park District's acquisition of the OPA property and the purchase of the Starcom radio network equipment for the police department. Annual debt service payments by the general fund will come in just under $600,000 for the year. In conclusion, the fiscal 24 general fund projected year-end fund balance is $46.2 million, or 147% of projected operating and debt service expenditures. This exceeds the target balance of 67% of operating and debt service expenditures. That concludes my formal presentation on the overall budget. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments before I pass it to the departments.
Okay, Andrew. What, how much is the budget going to be over the last year? In other words, our expenditures?
9.7%. That is, let me get Uh, that is, let me get your number. $2.78 million. And again, that includes-
Okay. And what's the biggest reason?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear out there that last question.
What, why is it 9.7% over the last year?
Sure. So the $2.7 million increase from the prior year budget, again, the large portion of that is an increase in the economic incentive or sales tax rebate payment of $1.5 million. Uh, and then as well, the payments in lieu of taxes going to the TIF in the past have been reported as transfers. This year, they're reported as expenditures, so that's a new expense on this year's budget. So when you total those two up, that's $2 million of the $2.7 million increase, and then the rest is an increase of 2.4%.
Okay.
So that's something that because of the change in the accounting will actually taper off as we go on because it won't be the big jump that it is this year, correct? Like when we, when we did the same thing previously with the golf course and the, and the summer, I think, yeah, Vernon Hills days was another one where we did the shift on it and it made it look like it was a bigger increase than it was, but that's actually an accounting change, right?
That's correct. There's two parts to this, this increase of the two items I noted. The $600,000 is an accounting change on how it's reflected. The $1.5 million was an increase in budget for economic incentive payments, so that may continue depending on the sales tax-
Right, okay. Thanks.
-performance, yes. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'm going to turn it over to-
Really quick, you look at that number, it was 147%. I think last year's 135%. The fund balance is operating, you know, do we have a target there? I mean, at some point, you know, that just keeps going up, but that, I mean, that just shows the health of our, I think it's important to point out the health of our village using that reference, right? Would that be a good number to look at, the health of our village?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and to answer your first question, the target is the 67% or maybe that might be a minimum. As I come onboard here and start to get more familiar with the processes, I'm going to work with Kevin and the team to keep an eye on this and figure out, make sure we have a long-term funding plan as well, so that way we can see what of this fund balance, if any, will be needed to fund those long-term projects and then also determine when we do have a slowdown in economic activity, what that might look like.
Nice presentation.
Thank you. Okay, turn it over to Chief Kreese.
Yeah, tough act to follow, but I will, I'll try and be brief but leave opportunity for any questions that you'd like to drive down into the particulars. So here with me tonight is Deputy Chief Shannon Halybets and Deputy Chief Jeff Selak. Very important members of the staff and the village is in good hands on the police leadership. Certainly have a good team there, and we couldn't have prepared this budget without the assistance of some key staff members. Have to point out that Andy Hoppy and Laura Erickson were critical in helping us, helping us get this going. So the next, the next slide, I'm going to take a few slides to dive into the details, but before I do that, I think it's best if, if our finance director highlights comments one and two here that are worthwhile to point out.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, yeah, just to touch really quick on these top two lines, the salaries and wages changes here, this reflection of a 12.6% increase over budget. Again, it's, it's not quite accurate. What we have to do is add in the $340,000 of the prior year COLA that was not budgeted in the fiscal 23 budget column there. So when we increase that budget for that, the change is more around that 6% mark, which again is consistent with the anticipated COLA and step raises. Looking at the employee benefits line, that one reversed, went down 5% over the prior year, and this is really due to realizing some cost savings in the change of the recent, the recent changes in the health insurance plan, eliminating the zero deductible, as well as a reduction of approximately $135,000 in the annual contribution to the police pension fund. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Chief.
Thanks. Uh, so here, I just wanted to highlight at a very high level some accomplishments. We certainly returned in this fiscal year back to what we would deter, you know, what we would call pre-COVID community engagement, supporting special events during the summer, running two separate citizen police academies, enhancing some technology and equipment. Importantly, as I briefed two weeks ago, our in-car video recording system and ALPR system. We had personnel changeover and fully incorporated a new non-s sworn position in the training logistics coordinator to help support a lot of training that is required and essential for the department to do. And then you could see here a slowdown of some of the appointments and turnover that we've had in recent years. We still, we still had several, but it's at a much more manageable pace than the last two years. The next thing I'd like to point out is some goals for the coming year. I'm not proposing any change in staffing numbers, either sworn or non-s sworn in the proposed budget. It is a status quo as far as headcount. We have got several increases in expenditures to support some services to aid in investigative services as well as enhance some of our scenario-based training and continue to invest in our employees and, and a wellness program. So the, the total bottom line for police department operations is $12,126,630. I can move on, I just have a couple more slides and then I could cover all the operations, any questions. The next one is the police dispatch fund. As the, as the village board knows, we operate this as one department, but this is a separate fund. And really, the, the point here I'd like to highlight is that Vernon Hills continues to play a leadership role in the consolidation of police dispatch services, both fire and police, throughout the county. This is really gaining steam. We've made significant inroads in the current fiscal year. These include our partnership in the building of a facility that has been funded by the county board. Every chance I get, I call out and thank the county board's leadership and commitment to this program by funding the facility that we need as a group of municipalities and agencies to operate. We've entered into yet another intergovernmental agreement to bring our partnership together, and through that, we've hired recently a project manager that is going to help lead the establishment of this new joint governance agency, which will run public safety communications and support it throughout the county. And care, I'm careful when I say that, and I want the community and you to hear this clearly. This is not a county-run organization or a sheriff-run organization. We are building from the ground up a new joint governance, public safety organization that we will be a partner in, along with all the other jurisdictions that will be a partner. A lot of work to make this happen, and Vernon Hills continues to be a real leader in this. Other, other accomplishments and efforts here is to first establish common use technology throughout the current dispatch centers operating in the county. That system is, that system is being implemented now, and we basically have about a two-year window where we are going to continue through this transition before we can be fully operating in the new structure. And when I say structure, I mean building and organization. This year, we had a retirement of our executive director of the communication center, and under Deputy Chief Halybets' leadership, we've made some adjustments there, continue to provide appropriate leadership in, but in a, in a different way. So the communications or police dispatch budget request is $2,867,082. And then I would just touch on a couple key other fund balances here. These are the forfeiture funds that are in the budget. There's actually three separate of them. One is the DUI fund, which is, which is provided for by fines and fees paid by offenders that are disposed of, their cases are disposed of in county court. Also, the drug forfeiture fund balance and estate seizure fund balance. So these are presented here. There's no action to take by the village here. These are really account balances, and when we spend any of these dollars, we come to you first to have that authorized, as you saw earlier tonight. So with that, I gave you a high level, but we're happy to answer any questions that might be on the board's mind.
Questions from the board.
Yeah, I'll ask a question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Chief, you with me?
I'm listening.
Okay. We got 55 employees.
Yes, you're correct. In, in the police department fund?
And we spend $12 million and some change on that, so that, right?
$12 million incorporates all of the expenditures of the police department fund, not just the employees.
Okay, so with 55 employees, how much do we spend per employee?
For salaries and benefits, sir? The proposed budget-
Yeah, group up.
Yeah, it's, it's on page 36 of the budget book, and the number for salaries and wages in the proposed budget for the police department is $7,096,401. So 7.1 million for salaries. Employee benefits, 4.4 million, $171,600.
So this, is it roughly, is it almost $200,000 per employee?
$204,000 per employee. That's total cost of compensation for salaries and benefits. That's the average per employee.
Okay. How does that compare to any of the town?
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not prepared tonight to give you any real particulars. What I can say is from a salary standpoint, we run, we run a lot of comparative and comparisons year-over-year to see how we line up, how we account for how all the benefits come out to it. Might be a little different between the communities, so I just couldn't speak to that with accuracy. Okay.
Does she have-
Mayor, if I could add, that $204,000, that includes the cost of pension contribution, whether it's sworn or IMRF contribution.
And it's, yeah. What's the pension contribution? You're going to be just here.
I'm, I'm going to ask Director Lyons to answer that question.
Yep. Thank you, Chief. Mayor, I can answer that for you. The pension contribution to the, to the police pension for the 24 budget is about $2.8 million, and it's a reduction of $135,000 in the prior year.
Why is that?
Well, the, as, these, these numbers, these recommended contributions each year are actuarially, actuarially determined. I have not combed through the, the details to that extent, but in general, I know the investment return has gone down this year. However, when you look at the last year, this is a one-year lag, so the investment performance prior to the, the beginning of last year was, was significantly over what this year was.
Okay, so that, that only represents the amount that we put in for the sworn officers?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's total of 45?
Mayor, could you repeat that question?
How many sworn officers do we pay pension?
Forty-four. Forty-four, we budgeted forty-four sworn positions.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I got.
Procedure then? Do you want a motion to-
We don't need a formal motion. What we're looking for is just consensus on if the board is okay with the, again, we're going to have some further minor refinements, but we don't need an actual motion on the exact dollar amounts. All right, well, I tried to get Dave Brown to stick around for the budget workshop, but I, I couldn't convince him, and since Chris has only been in his position for two hours, I, I also figured that wouldn't be fair, so I will, I will do my best effort here at the, at the public works budget, so please be kind to me.
He's a Northwestern grad, I like, let's see him try.
This is the same summary slide that, that you're all familiar with. I'll touch on a couple of, of notes here. Our commodities, you'll see an increase of about 7.9%. Two, two big items that we're projecting a budget increase for currently, one is for our fuel purchase. We purchase about 24,000 gallons of diesel fuel and 60,000 gallons of unleaded fuel per year. That's not all for the village. As you know, we share our fuel tank system with our neighboring jurisdictions, District 73, District 128, the Park District, and the Library District. So that budget's gone up for about $60,000. Also, the price of salt has gone up in the current year, or for the project, future year, I should say. Currently, we're paying about $70 per ton. That cost is increasing to $79 per ton. The silver lining there is that because of the light winter we've had this year, we normally order about 1,600 tons of salt. We're only slated right now to order about 1,400 tons, so we're going to save a little bit of money on that. But that, those types of commodity increases are what you're seeing in the increase for that line. Director Lyons mentioned earlier, the COLA increase not being reflected in the fiscal 23 budget, which is exaggerating the increase in, in salaries and wages for, for that line. And then we are seeing also some increases in some of our, our contracts. Our mowing contract is up 7% to $150,000. Our snow plowing of cul-de-sacs is up 10% to $110,000. Our street sweeping contract is up 10% to $66,000 per year, and our tree trimming contract is up 15% to $75,000 per year. But we do have some one-time projects that are not happening in the current, in the, in the fiscal 24 budget, which is, which is going to lead to some savings or offset some of those increases. From an achievement standpoint, there, there's a lot, but I'll, I'll just cover some of the highlights. Our staff has been wrapping up the in-house completion of the Harvey Lake Boardwalk. For those that aren't familiar, Harvey Lake is located just north of Hawthorne Mall. For those that aren't familiar, Harvey Lake is located just north of Hawthorne Mall. If you have a chance to get back there, it looks fantastic. Our team did a great job putting that together. Earlier this, or last summer, I should say, our Public Works team held their every other year open house event. It was a beautiful evening and very well attended by many of our residents. You're familiar, we facilitated our recruitment of our new director of Public Works, the village engineer, who's with us this evening. We completed a landscape beautification project along Lakeview Parkway, north of Center into Greg's Landing. And then we completed a streetlight replacement project in the Sugar Creek subdivision. A lot of same goals as we usually have. Our team is roll up the sleeves, get things done. So, a lot of basic operating items, keeping our infrastructure maintained, focusing on our green infrastructure as we get those opportunities, and promoting sustainability. We're looking for our team to continue to provide some mentorship and leadership as we continue our transition with our new director. And our village engineer serves on our development team, so working with Andrew and myself on bringing quality development projects to the village, and then, of course, maintaining our village public facilities. So, overall budget proposed of $6,467,937. If there's any questions, otherwise, I'll turn it over to Director Jennings.
Not going to grill them on Public Works. All right, I will run through this briefly. First, I just want to acknowledge Jen Heverin helped me put together a lot of the revenue projections that went into the budget this year. I didn't have the benefit of going through it last year, so it was very helpful to have the assist on some of the reporting. This, these slides are going to refer to pages 45 to 47 in the budget binder. As you can see on the slide, we have a total expense request for fiscal '24 of $980,000, sorry, $980,000, more or less. We have minor changes proposed for this year. We have some, you'll see an increase in our overtime budget. That is a combination of trying to accurately project inspector callouts, as well as projecting the use of non-exempt staff for meeting coverage for both planning and zoning and the board meetings. We have some other minor changes that are really just based on trying to work in more accurate numbers for subscriptions, memberships, that sort of thing. So, for, in this document, you'll see the projected fiscal year '23 numbers reflect some projects that have zoning entitlement already. That includes $590,000 from the Perry's Project Belt Tire, as well as the site preparation for the next mixed-use building next to Hawthorne Row, where the former Carson's was. The fiscal '24 revenue includes projections for the additional projects. So, buildout of the retail space within Hawthorne Mall, the Hawthorne Row retail space, as well as the building permit for the second mixed-use building itself. There's a theme that I'm going to come back to in a couple of slides here of trying to work on these projections. As Director Lyons had mentioned earlier, we have roughly $3.1 million in license and permit fees projected for fiscal '24. Hefty chunk of that is from commercial construction, so new commercial construction. So, about $1.2 million of that is from these one-off projects. They're not regular revenue. They're not from residential construction. They are specific to very large commercial projects, not something that we can count on on an annual basis. So, we'll be working with Director Lyons and Manager Chimani to try to separate out what we consider to be stable annual revenue that's essentially fixed, revenue that's relatively stable, that is trend-based. You know, residential rehab work tends to be trend-based, follows the market, and separate that from these very large, one-time projects that you'll see contribute, you know, one or two million dollars just by themselves in a year. Just one other note while I'm on this. If you look at the revenue from page 19, there is a line, you can see this transition of us trying to get these revenue funds separated out into more accurate lines. The, you'll see a construction fee number that disappears over time if you look at '21, '22, '23, and it gets replaced with this new commercial construction. That's some, just an example of what I was talking about, trying to separate out the different types of revenue. So, for our accomplishments for the year, we have, we've collected approximately $1.3 million in total permit revenue. We have a huge difference in the total valuation between '21 and '22. And these are calendar year numbers. I just want to clarify that. These are for calendar year '21, calendar year '22. We have, our valuation, our total valuation from '21 was $282 million of investment reflected in those, with those 1,757 permits. For '22, that is, we're down to $54 million. And that's just another example of the huge swings that you see when you've got permits issued for very large projects. So, that would be South Lake Industrial, the Hawthorne Mall Main Building. These are very large permit fees just on one project, two projects. I would say not listed here, but I view it as relevant. We've kind of kept things going. We've had transition. Being able to issue permits without any sort of interruption in service, I would view as an accomplishment. Again, a credit to the staff in this department. Let's see, I don't think I had anything else. Our goals for the upcoming year, the effort that I had just referred to, to improve our annual revenue projection, you can see reflected on the chart on the right, this huge spike of the total permits versus baseline revenue. That is the sort of the graphic representation of the jump that we got from the Hawthorne Row permit and the South Lake Industrial permits. The main thing that I think we're trying to do beyond just continue to be proficient in the entitlement and permitting process is related to the, one of the concepts you saw very early on, the idea of making sure that we make the best use of our staff hours, be as efficient as possible. So, use the tools that we've got to get the most out of the staff hours that we have. We're primarily a, we're primarily a, our main expense is personnel. So, using the hours that we have to better serve the community, use the software that we've got to make the most of our staff time, try to be as efficient as possible. That's a main goal for us. We're also going to be looking at a variety of programs to see if there are ways that we can tweak them and adjust them and make our processes more efficient. Example of that being the business licensing. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
I just have a quick question. So, I'm looking at page 19 in draft budget 2024, 3.1 million in license, permit and fees. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
And so, our budget, our operating budget for your department is just under a million. Is that...
That's correct. We pay for ourselves.
So, where does that difference end up in? What fund does it end up in?
These are general fund.
In the general fund? Okay. I think I saw, yeah, I think you're right. I saw that earlier. I know you're right.
And one quick note on that question, the permits fees and licenses, while most of it does include community development, there are other fees in there, our general revenues or police, police department-type revenues as well, in that 3.1 million.
I'm assuming that, because don't they get a certain percentage back after completion of projects?
Are you referring to the bonds?
No, like when they pull permits, when people pull permits and they get, like, they pay X amount for the permit, and then when the job is signed off on, they get a percentage back, right?
They do get a, they get bonds back, but we don't have, we separate that out from the permit.
So, it's separated out, okay. How many people on the, how many inspectors do you have on your staff?
We have two full-time and one part-time.
What's like the turnaround time, like when somebody calls in for an inspection, whether it's residential or commercial, usually, can they get out there?
We're, so we've been, we've been extremely responsive. One of the things that we've been working on is try to figure out how to balance staff time. So, I would say it's possible to get, it has been possible to get an inspection next day most of the time. One of the things I've been working on with my staff is to try to figure out how to balance office time as well. So, have a response time target of maybe two days, not necessarily do it 24 hours. But it's not uncommon for towns in this area to have a week delay, so.
I was just going to say, it's very convenient for the home...
We're extremely responsive to the people who have permits pulled with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Hello again. All right, I will be closing the evening with five sections. I will be very efficient with your time, but I'll also be very thorough. I will be covering administration, judiciary and village board, fire, police commission and committees, events, and Vernon Hills Days. We will start off with the administration, financial overview. You'll see two footnotes, which I will cover in my summary. The budget for administration provides funding for the village manager, human resources, the finance section, information technology, and cable studio functions. The manager's office provides organizational leadership, coordinates correspondence with elected officials, addresses policy issues, coordinates legal matters, administers the personnel/HR function, performs official record-keeping for the village, ensures transparency, and effective communication to the community. The finance section provides support for all village departments. Major finance responsibilities include budgeting, financial reporting, purchasing, accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll processing, investment, forecasting, and risk management. The IT function allows for village information to be shared electronically, allows work performed by village staff to be done more efficiently, provides for storage and safeguarding of data, maintenance of the IT network, and all infrastructure. The cable studio is a major component of the communications function, which is funded through a franchise agreement with cable providers. This function is responsible for recording board planning, board meetings, planning and zoning, and special meetings, along with community events, and helps with content preparation and programming on various platforms. Additional programs within the administration budget are property, casualty, and liability premiums, and professional contracts for services, including financial and administrative support services and IT contracts. Footnote number one, the board will see an increase of 28.7% in salaries and wages. This is due to the hiring of an in-house finance director that will now be funded through the salary account in this section, as well as the COLA and STEP increases that will be a result of the compensation plan. Footnote number two, the board will note there is also a decrease of 9.6% in the contractual services line, which is due to a reduction in staff within the financial and administrative services contract. The proposed budget request is $3,482,890, which is minus 1.6% from last year, or $57,745 less than the previous year. Administration accomplishments include support to the village board, advisory boards, commissions, and committees. We have achieved continuity of operation and enhanced support with a lot of organizational change to include additional support and programming, programming for our Vernon Hills seniors. We have continued our economic development throughout the village. We have continued participation in the Greenest Region Compact and our sustainability planning. The village communications team has ensured transparency and effective sharing of subject matter important to this community. The diversity and inclusion initiative has included community engagement opportunities, listening, and continued partnerships to include with our pride, with our pride team, Juneteenth commemoration, and recognition and celebration of Kwanzaa, and we've participated in Siwa D'Wali events throughout the year. Administration goals for '23, '24 include continuing to provide timely customer support, supporting economic development initiatives, continuing to assess green initiatives to include exploring opportunities for infrastructure improvements. We'll be talking about EV and hybrid in April, continuing to support our Vernon Hills seniors, transparent and effective sharing of information and subject matter important to this community, continuity of the village diversity and inclusion initiative, and we have maintained a sound budget and reserve policy as previously shared here tonight. If there's any questions, myself or the team can answer them.
Questions from the board? No? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next budget I'll be covering is judiciary slash village president and board financial overview. We'll start this in two sections. I'll start with the judiciary accounts. The judiciary budget captures anticipated costs for legal expenses in specific areas that include an administrative hearing judge. Funding for this allows a former judge to preside over village adjudication hearings. This also includes a governmental affairs attorney. This is utilized for monitoring state legislation and advocating for village interest. Examples include funding for capital improvement, preserving existing sales tax sharing agreements, and providing updates on the status of bills of significant interest to the village. This account also includes a labor attorney, which provides staff support and represents the village during matters including workplace rules, grievances, and discipline, and provides legal support during negotiations of our CBAs. This account also includes a special litigation attorney, reserve funding designated for the conclusion of a pre-existing case. This account also includes village council, which provides legal advice with day-to-day operations, provides guidance for redevelopment agreements, land use, and zoning. And finally, we have a village prosecutor, which is used to represent the village in court with enforcement actions by our police officers during the performance of their duties. The judiciary budget request is $435,000, 2.2% less, or $10,000 less than the previous budget year. Part two of this account is the village president and board. This budget captures costs associated with part-time salaries for the board members, as well as village membership and participation in professional organizations to include the Illinois Municipal League, the Lake County Municipal Conference, the Northwest Municipal Conference, and the International Council of Shopping Centers. This budget also provides funding to support and promote local civic associations to include the GLNV Chamber of Commerce and their functions, business mixers, service organizations to include Rotary and the American Legion, along with village financial support during local charitable events, school programs, SRA, and other events as designated by board members. This budget also includes the village's charitable grant program. This program was created to recognize and support local charitable efforts that directly benefit the greater local community. This program allows board members to review local service organizations, their initiatives, and award financial support. The board will note the charitable grant program was increased by $4,500. This is due to a request for additional funding to include an existing program that the police department will be talking about in the future that provides scholarships to local Vernon Hills High School students. The amount requested for the judiciary slash village president and board is $564,142, which is 2,000 less than the previous fiscal year. I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
Okay, hearing none, feel free to move on.
Thank you, sir. Next budget I'll be mentioning, covering is the committee's budget. This is also in two parts. I'm going to cover the police department section, which includes the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners budget, which is eighteen thousand two hundred dollars and is managed by Chief Patrick Kreese. The commission has the important role of administering the standards for recruitment and testing of our police officers. It also covers the cost of any testing that is needed throughout the year. Again, this budget is eighteen, eighteen thousand two hundred dollars. If there's any questions on this part, I will defer to Pat Kreese. Next part of this budget includes the Vernon Hills Seniors Organization, which was established in nineteen ninety-five with the purpose of providing a social forum for independent living seniors to engage in social and recreational activities. Within the seniors organization budget, the board will note an increase of four thousand five hundred dollars, or approximately twenty-one point eight percent, for funding in the amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Funding for the organization includes facility upkeep, office supplies, furniture for the senior center, engagement and programming activities, and transportation services. The increase is due to a request from seniors to draw from a deferred revenue account intended to support programming. We do have seniors that I would call snowbirds that do travel to Florida and watch us, as well as the Philippines and watch us. Our treasurer is currently in the Philippines with his wife, and they asked that I give a quick historical perspective on a deferred revenue account that actually supports the seniors organization and a little bit of history of this. As I mentioned, the board will note an increase in the amount allotted for the seniors organization under the line item, programming. In nineteen ninety-eight, during the entitlement process for Residential Resorts International, which ultimately developed a senior residential facility first known as Maravilla, later the Park, and now Brookdale Senior Living, Vernon Hills, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a proposed senior residential facility included language, which provided a developer contribution in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be paid in installments of fifteen thousand for ten years. This money was collected by the village and placed in a deferred revenue account with the intent of this funding to be used to supplement programming for independent living Vernon Hills seniors through activities coordinated by the Vernon Hills Seniors Organization. Over the years, a transfer has been made from the deferred revenue account to the seniors organization budget. However, during the pandemic, more specifically during the period that there was stay-at-home guidance and the center was closed, the amount of money designated and used was reduced and the allotted amount has been status closed since. As the Vernon Hills seniors are back in full operation with over a hundred and seventy members at this time, a request has been made by the seniors committee for increased funding for programming. As mentioned, the deferred revenue account exists and it has a current balance of just under one hundred thousand dollars. As seniors are resuming their traditional activities, they have requested this amount for programming and engagement be increased. Our plan is to resume funding of the programming amount, of the programming account and the amount of ten thousand dollars per year. This increase in the budget does not require funds to be transferred from village reserves as this amount is maintained in the deferred revenue account set aside by the developer agreement for the seniors programming, for seniors programming and activities. Some of the goals of the seniors organization include, I'm mentioning that programming has resumed, they've been going on architectural tours, they have a, they've been having several outings, including going to the Marriott, which is all covered under the agreement under their programming and arts fund. I've mentioned in previous board meetings that the organization is now represented by a committee. It's a committee of about fifteen people and it's working very well, a lot of consensus on the activities and the programming. They submit requests to the, to the village through the staff, and staff from the finance section does a reimbursement once a month for their, their programming and entertainment. As I mentioned, village staff oversees the budget and we do support them with events and programming. I've also mentioned that the budget funds our transportation services, which was the senior taxi program. This has trended lower each year, but it is still popular with some seniors because they are allowed to use transportation services in the evening hours when other services are not available. I've also mentioned in previous board meetings, the new county-wide paratransit system, Wright Lake County was implemented in twenty twenty-two, and that continues to be very popular with seniors and many of them take it here to our facility. So again, the total senior citizen committee amount requested is twenty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And today we had a senior potluck, and I shared that I was going to be making this presentation, and the seniors wanted me to express their appreciation to this board for the continued support and funding of their organization. Again, these are independent living seniors, many of them living alone, that come here for socialization and programming, and they appreciate the opportunity to connect with their peers, they appreciate the opportunity to connect with the village staff, and again, they just wanted to say thank you. So on behalf of seniors, thank you. I can answer any questions?
Any questions from the board on this item? Okay?
All right. Next budget I will cover is events. Each year, the village funds and supports numerous family-friendly events that help create a sense of community and contribute to the character of the village of Vernon Hills. The events budget includes funding for the Arbor Theater Concert Series, the Jim and Helen Hire Fishing Derby, Pageant, July Fourth Parade and Fireworks, donation to the Park District to support a fall community event, and a tree, menorah and Kwanzaa lighting event. The total proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is eighty-eight thousand three hundred dollars, a seven point eight percent increase. Staff has noted that inflation has cost for cost related to entertainment for the July Fourth Parade to be up approximately eight percent, so this is a driver of the additional funding request. The board should also note, we have requested a donation to be included in this budget should the village again desire to support the Park District with a fall community event. Last year's event, we, we supported Rib Fest, and I think everyone would acknowledge that is a great event, and they, they did request support from the board for, for us to continue that support this year as well. The total funding amount request is eighty-eight thousand three hundred dollars for the events budget.
Questions on this account?
Yeah, I have a question, just on the Park District. Are we in the budget now? This is their fiftieth anniversary.
So we're going to help, I guess, and sponsor with a band, bands, is that correct?
It's a, yes, I can cover that in the, under the summer celebration. We're going to sponsor that under summer celebration. So some of the, some of the goals for the events and accomplishments, again, due to the COVID pandemic, several events were canceled during twenty twenty-one, however, they've all fully resumed since. Arbor Theater Concert Series, July Fourth Parade, fireworks, Vernon Hills Days, fireworks are all being planned. Again, village to support Rib Fest by sponsoring entertainment, so eighty-eight thousand three hundred dollars. Next account is the Summer Celebration Fund, now named Vernon Hills Days. Each year, the village hosts a community event at Century Park adjacent to Big Bear Lake. For twenty twenty-three, this event is being planned for Thursday, July thirteenth through Sunday, July sixteenth. The event is going nostalgic and returning to its original name, Vernon Hills Days. And on Saturday night, it will have a fifties theme. In answering trustee Mark Ward's question, our committee consisting of volunteers and village staff is excited to announce that we are partnering with the Park District to help them celebrate their fiftieth anniversary. Together, we're excited to host what has become known as one of Lake County's best summertime events. Entertainment will include fireworks on opening night, Thursday, July thirteenth, great musical entertainment with additional financial, financial support from the Park District, carnival, food and beer tent, children's activities and more. Organizers will be issuing a media release in the coming months to announce the musical entertainment lineup. We look forward to celebrating community and summer with our friends and neighbors this July. Last year's funding was one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. The amount requested for twenty-three is two hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, an increase of approximately nine thousand eight hundred dollars. As mentioned, the entertainment, opening night fireworks on Thursday, July thirteenth. The Park District is going to be financially supporting Saturday musical entertainment. That's going to allow the village to have some really great bands on Thursday and Sunday, Thursday, Friday and Sunday. Food and beer tent, children's activities and more. Again, the committee is continuing to finalize details. In the coming weeks, we'll be announcing the entire entertainment lineup. Total request, two hundred and seven eight sixty, two hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and sixty for Vernon Hills Days. Able to answer any additional questions? They, they have not, traditionally the village has done.
Yeah, this is just for celebrating their fiftieth anniversary of the, of the Park District, yeah.
That is the conclusion of my five reports.
Comments or questions from the board?
Well, the good news is that's the end, so. We, just as a reminder, at our next committee, the whole meeting on March twenty-first, we will conclude with the remainder of the budget, these items on the screen. And thank you, everyone, for your patience and interest tonight.
So then entertainer, motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn, committee of the whole.
We have a motion of second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
Never. And that's the next day, right? Yes.